Monday, November 25th, 2024, meeting for the City Council of the City of Lamar. I'm Mayor Kirk Cressman. You know, generally, I try to say a few words before the meeting, just to talk about things that are happening, and we do have a lot of things happening in our community. This weekend, we have coming up the Parade of Lights on Saturday. The Chamber of Commerce moved it to a Saturday so they can have an all-day event downtown. So we're really looking forward to that. If you're in town on Saturday, check out some of the shops downtown. You know, I don't, I don't want to be unreasonable by any means. I don't say, you know, shop local all the time for everything that you have or for every Christmas gift, but if there are items that you can get local, I am asking that we all try to support our local merchants as much as we can. Try to support them with a few presents here and there and see what you can do to help strengthen our economy. So if you do have the opportunity to shop local, please shop local, support our local merchants and businesses in the area. With that said, I know we do have a lot on our agenda tonight. We have a lot of things to discuss, so I'm going to move forward with that. I hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving and safe and healthy for all. All right, moving on, we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, no, we have our invocation with Jeff Alexander. Jeff?
Good, we pray, "Our Father, this is Thanksgiving week, and we want to look to you with gratitude, and, Lord, we ask for you because we need you, your grace, your mercy, your wisdom." I pray for the City Council tonight and for our city administrators and our police department, our fire department, Lord, that you would watch over them and guide them. Pray for the activities this week, that you will also guide in those matters as well. I pray for our community, strengthen it. Lord, may we look to you and may we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Councilman Bates, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the time is now 7:02 PM. I will call the meeting to order. Roll call?
Joe Gonzalez.
Here.
Shay Lamotta.
Here.
Jerry Jenkins.
Here.
Kurt Cressman.
Here.
David Zavala.
Manuel Tamas.
Here.
Brett Bates.
Here.
Rob Evans.
Here.
Kristen Schwartz.
Here.
Lance Clark.
Here.
Okay. Looking at the agenda, we do have one item that came up at the last minute that was not put on the agenda. We will add that on under new business as item number one, and we'll move everything else down on the new business, but it is for the Zonta, 16 days of activism. They have a, the Zonta Club members are here tonight to do a proclamation, so we will consider that during our first item of the agenda, if that is okay with the council. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion in a second to amend the agenda with the one item for Zonta Club. All those in favor, you don't have to vote, we'll just vote verbally. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay, so we have made that change, and we will do that at the beginning of our new business. Moving on, we have the consent agenda. I did not see any items that needed to be removed and voted on separate for the consent agenda. Was there any other items that somebody else saw? I didn't see any. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Next item on the agenda is public comment portion of the meeting. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject that does not appear on the agenda. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each, and that is at the discretion of the council. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to the council? Someday, we might have somebody, but tonight, we don't. So if you do have something you'd like to speak to the council about, as always, this is your portion of the meeting. You're welcome to come and talk to the council and use your time to have us address any concerns. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, which would be reports and correspondence, and we will start with the City Treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This, the last two weeks, we've been working diligently on the CDS funding and navigating that process. We did get some good news, and we were able to retain JVA as our engineer of record on that, so we've gotten started on the process and had a meeting the other day with JVA, and everything is moving forward on it. So we look to have the application submitted by the end of the year and funding available, we think around January or February, to start moving forward on that. So it's been a, actually, a fairly good process with EPA. We had a meeting with them on Friday, and things are going well. So we've got some really helpful individuals that are on our team from EPA. It is kind of an extensive process to go through that, to get that CDS funding, which is kind of interesting to me, but, and then I did get information from, and I may have reported on this last time, I'm not sure, so I went ahead and going to talk about it again, on the TAP grant, I am going to have to go out for bid on, uh, engineer for design on it, so I'm working on the RFP on that. Today, we are working on our first data pull for Tyler. It's not gone quite as wonderfully as we had planned, so they are still working on that right now as we speak. I'm going to try to get utility billing back up in the morning so we can do utility billing tomorrow, so, and then we'll have an after-pull as soon as Tony gets the bills done, or we'll have to shut down the system again. So it's been a tedious day. We're working on payroll today and some other things, so, but we will get through it, and it will be worth it in the end. It just wasn't what we anticipated, so that's consumed our day today, so, but I think that's all I had, unless you have questions for me.
Does it look like it? Does it have any? Okay, thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda would be the City Clerk's report. Linda?
So for this month, in the month of, the month of October, there were 2,308, nine returns, sales tax returns posted, our new licenses, we had six Lamar licenses and five non-Lamar licenses. We had one Lamar business account closed and three non-Lamar business accounts closed. For our residential services in utilities, there were 67 electric and 43 water connects, along with 53 electric and 38 water disconnects. Our commercial services, there were nine electric and two water connects, along with nine electric and two water disconnects. In our cemeteries, there was one lot purchased at Fairmount, along with four opening and closings, two opening and closings in the veterans section at Fairmount, and one opening and closing at Riverside. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Does it look like it? Okay?
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Linda. All right, that leaves us to the City Administrator's report. Rob?
So there's not going to be a coffee with Rob this week. There's going to be a where's with Rob. Where is Rob? Sort of like, where's Waldo? You catch me on Wednesday, I'm going to go to one of the places I've been to throughout the year. If you catch me, I'll buy you breakfast, your coffee, sit down, everything. Catch me one of these places, and I'm buying breakfast, too. So, one of those things. Lamar Public Library's Holiday Food Drive, November 1st to the 20th of December, Sparrow House Ministries, those grads are great. Thanksgiving holiday, going to be closed Thursday and Friday, 28th and 29th. Our city Christmas party is December 7th, 6 to 11. Dinner starts at 6:30. I think I put out the last chance, put your, you know, order in today, or you ain't, you don't get anything, so if they don't sign up, they're not going to get it. Chamber of Commerce Coco Crawl, we did mention that earlier about the, on Parade of Lights tonight, but you can buy a mug, and if you get free refills throughout the night if you walk around and go to the establishment, so it'll be fun. Let's see. Concerts at 2:00 PM at Shore Arts Center, admission is free, see the chamber for more details. There's flyers going to go out, and all on their side, our side. The Parade of Lights, we mentioned earlier, November 30th, starting at 5:15, you know, it gets dark early around here right about now, so it'll be plenty dark already. Everybody might have noticed that there's a notice of service lines letters, they're going out to water customers, there's a copy of flyer in the packet. If you don't know what it, you can come see me, and I can give you a copy, but it was sent out on social media as well. And let's see, I wanted to thank the Streets Department again, if anybody's here from Streets. If anybody noticed, we talked about it earlier, that the Streets look really, really nice with all the lights going up. I know it's going to get better, and there's a lot of people putting lights up right now, but bottom line is, it's really fun to go down the street and be proud of Lamar when you go down the streets around here, compared to all these other places I've been to, I like coming down here. So we have some projects to talk about. Let's see, the Fire Department, Deputy Chief Wagner got his fire inspection won, and that's a, it's a big deal. So he's, he's now gone through a lot of schooling, and, you know, our progression in our, in our employees is always, they're always trying to get better. The ICC Code Council and the, let's see, the Colorado Division of Fire Protection and, what was that?
Prevention and Control.
Prevention and Control, so Fire Protection and Control. The Command Vehicle, the new Command Vehicle, you guys got the Fire Department, is almost done. There's some decals and stuff going on still, but almost done. Parks and Rec, their priorities are, you know, the Eskandil Field are still doing the repair and getting some new estimates on people who can help us out there, the Enchanted Forest Parade of Lights, there's a lot of work going out there to make sure that's right. IT, have full day, and with some goals, we're going to be giving all users with an active email addresses. Some people don't have them, so we're going to make sure with this, make sure it's how Tyler needs it. Everybody's going to be having new, everybody's going to have an active email address. Let's see, the library, we talked about the food drive. The last library at Craft is on December 7th. Let's see, the police, the Parade of Lights, we have a lot of talk about the RVs coming in, and I can guarantee you, even if they're not where everybody wants them to be when they open, it is open. Army's not open for business, it's finished. We will have food coming out of that restaurant, I promise. And you can look sometime this year, and you'll see me out there probably, I'm going to have something, I'm going to, I'm going to get a whole bunch of sandwiches for people as an early, a soft opening, a soft, soft opening, because I promised a lot of people we're going to get it out there, I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, I have, and I guess since people have been asking, there's been a lot of questions on what's the delay, when are they going to be open? And I have been in, in contact with Jeanette Davis, with TA, and with the LV's Food Service Group. They were planning for the first part of December, but some of their staff, the management staff, had to start over because they, they lost a couple of staff members, they had to hire them again, it's a seven-week training process, and because of the seven-week training, they're not going to get done until January, so the target is January the 6th. However, they said that may change depending on if they can get through earlier or if there's any delays, but as of right now, that's their target date, is January the 6th. Unfortunately, I was hoping they'd get done before the holiday basketball tournaments and stuff, but we'll just accept it when they get here, so looking forward to that in January, first of the year. Thank you. You did also have in there about the schedule, Thanksgiving week schedule for trash and all of that stuff.
Oh, yeah, I've got it posted, but I can go through some of these here real quick.
I just thought if there are people listening, they may want to know. Most of it's the same, though, isn't it? Not doing any changes?
Well, other than the numbers, okay, Thanksgiving week schedule, you know, free transfer station, landfill weekend, November's Free Dump Weekend is 11/23, so the 23rd, that was just past it, and Friday, 11/28 and 29, so next, next weekend, we'll have Free Dump Weekend.
Okay. No?
It says, it's closed on those days, I'm sorry. That's, I've got that listed right here, it's closed on those days.
It's open on Friday, the 29th, and Saturday from 8:30 to 3:30, but they're closed on Thanksgiving, the 28th.
Yep, yep. Let's see, residential trash pickup, 11/27. Friday trash pickup will stay the same, the commercial trash pickups will be 26 and 27. Friday's the same. Wednesday route will be on the 26th, and Friday route will be collected on, so if you have one for Friday for cardboard, it'll be done on, the Friday route will be done on Wednesday as well, or Tuesday, the 26th. Landfill is closed, open, and we went through that already. Police dispatch and fire ambulance services are going to maintain our regular hours, so for non-emergency, we need to call Prowers County Dispatch at, I'm going to go ahead and give it, 719-336-3977. And if you have, need additional information for Thanksgiving week hours, please call my office, 719-336-1365.
Okay. So if that went over too quick for you, you can always call Rob's office, 336-1365.
I'm mad out there.
So that should be fine. All right, any questions for the City Administrator? I don't have any. All right, thank you, Rob. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is reports and correspondence from the council. I'll start off with Joe.
Okay. Plan and zoning has not met yet, and the Gulfport did meet, had the opportunity to attend their meeting. They are still working with the Elks on a, some type of resolution contract to figure out how to do business, I suppose, downstairs. They've not yet come to terms, so they filed something temporary until April 1st of 2025, then they will re-meet again and try hash out their differences. They came to that agreement so that way their new pro-shop manager, Terry Turner, could obtain a liquor license to sell alcohol downstairs and run the pro-shop. And it's a hit and miss, whether they're open or closed now due to the weather, but that's really about it that's happening out there, that's any significance that's going on. Other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Okay.
Shay Lamotta?
So the Airport Board met on Wednesday, and we had an awesome presentation about the repaving project. It is going well, and it'll be finished here, I believe, by the 15th is their target date. And we also discussed some concerns about some of the lighting needing updated out there, and what we would need to do going forward for that.
Okay, Jerry?
Public Safety met on Thursday, and we did still discuss some about the Neighborhood Watch, because it's really hard when you don't have funds, so we got to start finding out how to do our fundraising and stuff. We also talked about how it's really awesome to see that the new chief and the police department have been doing the drug bust that they're doing. Now we just hope that we can do something about the speeding semis going down Main and the traffic, because that's getting bad.
One step at a time.
Yep.
Manuel, one board has scheduled a 14, I was not able to attend. Okay?
We met last Monday and presented their 2025 budget. They also discussed some of those budget holdups that they brought to us today in our work session. LPI met today, we got to have our first meeting with the new Main Street Manager, Brenda May. She's already hitting the ground running, which is really great to see, really excited to work with her in that capacity. And I think Anne Marie mentioned it in the work session, we are going to be doing some board restructuring and needing new board members, so over the next few weeks, you will see some probably marketing materials from LPI and the city's Facebook for board members for partnership. And for those who don't know what LPI is, is our Main Street Port Program. We're underneath DOLA's oversight, and it is a Main Street America program that acquires that structure, so that is all I have.
Okay.
I did forget to mention, we do have one more opening for the Public Safety Board, and we meet the third Thursday of every month from 4 to 5. So if you're interested, get ahold of Rob.
Okay. All right, I don't have anything on my end, so we will continue to move forward. The next item on the agenda is item number one of new business, which is the Zonta Proclamation. So would you like to read this, or would you like to come up and explain what this is for, please? So we do have some members of the Zonta, the Prowers County Zonta, here with us, if you wouldn't mind just stating your name, yes, please? And just let us know what this is about.
Okay. I'm Elizabeth Widom, I'm the advocacy chair. Connie Jacobson is the president of the club this year, and Cody Loughlin is the president-elect. The 16 Days of Activism Against Gender-Based Violence starts today and goes through December 10th, and we will do something every single day throughout Lamar, whether it's a window display, walking down Main Street at night with flashlights, just different things. It is a worldwide movement to stop the various crimes against women and girls.
Okay. Okay, so I do have the proclamation here, I'll go ahead and read it, and then the council can vote on it before we sign.
Thank you.
So proclamation, a proclamation declaring the 16 days between International Day to Eliminate Violence Against Women on November 25th and International Human Rights Day on December 10th as the 16 Days of Activism Against Gender-Based Violence. Whereas we, as citizens of this community, recognize the worldwide problems of violence against women occurs even here in Lamar, Colorado, and whereas gender-based violence is traumatic to the body, mind, and spirit, and can prevent people from being fully active participates, participants at home and in the world, and whereas the health of parents and caregivers is critical to the overall health and well-being of their families and the larger community, and whereas gender-based violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters and foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity, and whereas in spite of some progress, we need only to look at our newspapers or watch a television newscast to see the unfortunate truth that gender-based violence has not yet been eliminated here in Lamar or around the world, and whereas we support efforts of individuals and joint organizations such as the Zonta Club of Prowers County to raise awareness, stimulate discussion, and advocate for local solutions that'll curb gender-based violence, and whereas these local people join thousands of others from around the world to assert that right of women and demand to be free of violence is a fundamental right. So do we have a vote or a motion to pass this? So moved. Second. You have a motion in a second, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Opposed, same sign?
Unanimous in favor of?
All right, so now, therefore, I, Mayor Kirk Cressman, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Lamar, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the 16 days between the International Day to Eliminate Violence Against Women on November the 25th and the International Human Rights Day on December 10th as the 16 Days of Activism Against Gender Violence. During these 16 days, all citizens are urged to support efforts to end gender violence and to eliminate the detrimental consequences gender violence has on the well-being of our community. Do you have a pen? Can I use? All right, I'll come back over here. And provide you with a copy.
I'll make sure it's your copy, your signature, okay?
Okay, I'll make sure. All right. I have, and then here is your copy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here's your copy. Okay. Again. All right, moving right along, and thank you to the Zonta Club for attending tonight. The next item on the agenda is Resolution 241102, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Lamar, Colorado, setting the interest rate paid on customer water deposits. Would you like to speak on this, Linda?
Sure. So this is a yearly housekeeping item. On a yearly basis, our water deposit interest rates are reviewed and updated per PUC. PUC approved interest rate for 2025 is 4.93%, which there was no increase from 2024.
Okay, so we would be setting the rate at 4.93%. Okay. Any questions from the council? I don't have any. I don't have any. Do we have a motion? So moved. You have a motion in a second to set the rate at the 4.93, and approved Resolution 241102, and allow the mayor to sign. Is that right? Yes, that's correct. Okay. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Opposed, same sign?
Unanimous in favor of?
Moving right along, we have agenda item number three, approved staff to apply for the Elpumar Competitive Grant. This is initiated by Kristen Schwartz, Tess Camp, and Chief Fear. Tess?
Good afternoon. The Elpumar Grant is funded through the general fund competitive process. Lamar intends to apply for a new canine dog, a crate for inside the vehicle, kennel for the handlers, reticence, and the transport crate. The City of Lamar was planning on applying for $22,680. As I'm sure you've seen, we've been going for donations, the police department has advertised that a couple times, so this dollar amount may change, but this grant has no match, so we may just reduce it.
Okay. Okay. And I know there was a couple of other programs that we were going to, that Jerry had brought up as well, for the trained and proven bloodhound teams, I don't know if that would be relative to this as well?
I, I already gave some to be given to the chief, and that would be, if possible, if it's a donation and a secondary, but you got to look at the sustainability for having another dog. We would take it, we would take advantage of it if we certainly could.
Okay, well, if we can look into that one as well, that'd be great, but as for this, to approve the staff to apply, do we have a motion? So moved. You have a motion in a second to approve the staff to apply for the Elpumar Grant. Any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Opposed, same sign?
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Approved staff to apply for the CDPEG EMTS Provider Grant. This was also another grant that was initiated by Kristen Schwartz, Tess Camp, and Chief Burkert this time. Would you like to speak on this?
Sure. The CDPEG EMTS Provider Grant has funded a few ambulances for the City of Lamar before. Grant applications will be open on December 18th, a pre-application is due February 8, and the full application is due February 15th. This is a 50% match grant, and the total project price would be $275,500, and the match would be $137,500. I know this year, we're not going for a full ambulance, it's just the truck, and we'd be placing the ambulance box on the new truck.
Right, that's correct, so what we're doing is a re-chassis, we basically sit there, send off company, and they'll either source the chassis itself, or we do a system and source another, and they'll take the box off our existing ambulances, renovate the whole thing, bring it back up to current standards, and go ahead and replace electrical each bag, you know, cafeteria, something like that, and bring it back close.
They've done that before.
So right now, we haven't done this before, we've ordered brand new ambulances, 100%, but with the competitiveness of the grant, production of money, and stuff like that, the stakes were pushing for re-chassis, and we've seen some great successes of unvaluing the front end for the re-chassis ambulances.
Is the match budgeted?
Actually, the whole $275,500 is, with a five-year lease on that, so we want to head into that in case we don't get the grant, but we're going to do this route first.
But if we get the grant, it'll just save that much more?
It will, yep.
Great.
Awesome.
Okay. Do we have a motion? So moved. Second. You have a motion in a second to approve the staff to apply for this grant? Any final discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Opposed, same sign?
Unanimous in favor of?
All right, agenda item number five, approved agreement with JVA on water and wastewater treatment plant design and engineering. This is also initiated by Kristen Schwartz and Tess Camp. Tess?
This agreement would allow JVA to provide assistance with the SRF funding, CDS funding, and also get permitting as well as design at different stages, CMAR bidding in the final design of the project. CMAR bidding in the final design of the project.
What CMAR?
Is that the federal standards for the bidding?
Risk, okay, gotcha. I just wondered if it was.
Aye.
I was testing her.
Gotcha. Dang it. And this is what I was talking about earlier, that EPA had allowed us to go ahead and go forward with JVA. And so this is the, a letter of agreement that will allow us to get through to the design and engineering phase of the wastewater treatment.
Okay.
Lance, have you had a chance to look over the agreement?
I reviewed the agreement, I have no issues with it. It attached an addendum to it for approval as well.
So would we need a motion to approve the agreement with the addendum?
Correct.
Okay.
I move to approve the agreement with the addendum. Sorry, can't speak.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the agreement with the addendum. Any final discussion?
Thank you all for working so hard on this.
All right, seeing no other discussion, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. The agenda item number six, ACA Reporting Agreement for 2024, the ten ninety-fives with Clifton Larson Allen LLP. Kristen?
Yeah, so this is that annual agreement that I bring to you every year. This is the company that helps us process our ten ninety-fives and get those uploaded to the IRS. So I'm just asking that council approve the agreement to, for them to assist us with our 2024 ten ninety-fives. Allow the mayor to sign the agreement. Lance has looked this over and didn't have any issues with it. It's the same agreement from last year. The price did increase a hundred dollars over last year's price.
Do we have quite a few forms for those ten ninety-five?
Everybody has to get one that works for the city of Lamar.
Everybody would?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So I think I usually print, I think it's around two hundred or, or more each year.
Okay.
But it's a, you have to have usually a third-party provider upload them to the IRS. So this is our, the one that is affiliated with ADG for right now, so this year we'll need to use them again.
Okay, council?
Make a motion to approve a service agreement that's, allow the mayor to sign.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Moving right along, we do have the last item on the agenda, well, not the last one, but second to the last. Number seven, new public safety building discussion and possible action. This is initiated by myself and Rob Evans. Over the last few months, actually over the last year, we've been having some serious considerations about a public safety building for the city of Lamar. We have went through multiple possibilities. We started off with the idea of expanding our current building here in downtown Lamar and expanding off of our current police and fire area off this building. And we had a design firm come in and give us some samples, is that right, Kristen? Am I saying that correctly?
That's correct, yeah.
And what we found is that it would be a multi-million dollar project, probably around thirty, we said.
I, I never really did get a good number based on that final design, but it, it was going to be.
Lot of options, all the way from thirty to twelve.
Ten, like ten, all the way up to thirty, depending on the options that we chose.
So ten to thirty. So even at that, we're still looking at no less than around $10 million to do that type of a project. So it was very significant, and you know, even though we had some funds available that were set aside for a public safety building, that would not even scratch the surface. So with that in mind, we've thought of different options, and we have considered looking at a building that is for sale here in Lamar. We narrowed it down to two different possibilities. One was the old Kmart building, and the other was the Car Palace. Over the last three months, we have been negotiating with Bill Wooten, Bud Wooten, to try to come to an agreement. We do have the agreement with the council, a contract that we would be presenting to the council tonight. And they narrowed the price down to $650,000, and they will do a $25,000 donation to the city of Lamar to lower that price down to $625,000 for the Car Palace building and all the property along with it. They would consider that donation as part of a donation towards doing the naming rights of calling it the Wooten Public Safety Building. And we did go through and look at all the different options, and Lance had an opportunity to make some changes. There was one item that we wanted to get a change on, which was item twenty, item thirty, is that right?
It's in the additional clause under the paragraph or, or section thirty, and it's referencing section ten point six point four regarding environmental phase ones and phase twos. Essentially, within that clause, if, it would need to be amended to add the additional language that if the buyer were to terminate the contract, that seller would, and the seller has provided the phase one and phase two, myself, then the seller would be able to retain $10,000 of the $30,000 earnest monies as non-refundable funds. In no way does that, additional changes, that it doesn't increase the sale price or the earnest monies required to be deposited. And this would be for situations if the, if the, the seller had went through that step to provide that phase one, possibly phase two. And if, if the city were to terminate the contract, that that $10,000 would be retained by the seller. So other than that change, that, that's the change that I think would help clarify that section, that it doesn't increase the price, that it doesn't increase the earnest money required. It's my understanding that the seller and seller's attorney was agreeable to that language. So I would just propose, if the city's passing, intending to pass this agreement tonight, that it be amended to reflect the changes that's been proposed to the seller.
Okay. So at this time, you know, I wanted to present this and allow Lance to present this as well. At this time, I wanted to open it up for any discussion. I know generally we would get a motion and then open it for discussion, but I would rather us have the open discussion. We do have the option of tabling it, so that we can discuss it further and do more investigation. We can approve the contract as submitted tonight with the modification that Lance has given us, or we can postpone it and just continue to look for another option. I think over the last few months, one thing that we have determined is that there are very few options for us to look at in the city. This seems to be a building that if it passes all inspections and passes all, you know, the phase one and phase two environmental studies with no issues, that it would be the less expensive route for the city to go as far as expanding and getting a public safety building. So I'll open it up with the council, what do you guys?
And the $10,000 is because the seller is buying or paying for the cost to have the phase one, phase two. So just for that clarity purposes. Other languages, changes has really just been going back and forth between the seller and buyer. But in, in my view, the language clarifications that occur or that exist on the contract currently, I don't have any issues with them.
Okay.
I think we've done our due diligence in negotiating, for sure, you know, we've been back and forth several times. And so, you know, we're probably at a decision place. I don't think there's any reason that we need to table it, but any, you know, any discussion. I think one of the things too, maybe is just, you had mentioned about the funds, maybe just even letting, you know, the taxpayers know that these are not taxpayer funds necessarily that are being utilized for this purchase, it's funds that have been set aside in different places, so.
So it's FPA forfeiture money?
So FPA forfeiture money, this was from a, a old retirement fund that had closed out. It was from the six, seventies, eighties.
Yeah.
Quite a while. And the last person that was drawing from this fund had passed away, so the funds were available for us to use, and since it was related to public safety, we thought it would be good to redirect those funds to a public safety project. And considering that we are renting, you know, facilities throughout the community, whether it's storage facilities or office facilities, because of our growth inside the police and fire departments, we thought it might be reasonable to consider putting in a public safety building. So that's our whole intent, just for the public, whoever's watching tonight. You know, one thing that we had discussed was the naming rights of the public safety building. And I guess I want to say, you know, I was, I was thinking that we should get a little bit more on value for that naming rights. They're offering the $25,000 donation for the naming rights, and generally, we, we give those out for a lot larger amounts. We do have the option to turn it back and, and not accept that. But I did want to take a moment to say, you know, Bill and Kathy Wooten have been a huge part of our community. And I feel like, even though it's a little bit lesser than what we would like, I feel like it's still a nice gesture for them because of all of the investment that they've made for our community throughout the years, to have that opportunity for the legacy of calling it the public, or the Wooten Public Safety Building. I think the intention is there to try to assist the city in getting this building, and they've been really good with working with us. Even though, you know, the question is there whether or not we want to go back. I, my personal opinion is I think we should give some leeway there because of the amount of years and service that they've given our community. So I'm okay with accepting the twenty-five with the naming rights as a donation, but I'll leave that up to the council as well. So, okay. So how would you like to approach this? Would you like to table this and discuss it more? Would you like to continue to search? Or are you ready to make a decision on this public safety building with the contract that we have in hand?
I don't think we need to table it. I think we've all had enough information presented to us, and we've all been working together, and we have been negotiating back and forth, and I think we all have enough information to move forward.
Okay.
Great. That's great.
So do we have a motion?
So moved.
With the changes.
With the changes.
Presented today, yes. I'll second. Okay, we have a motion to accept the contract with the recommended changes from our attorney. And we have a second. Any final discussions? Now, just to make sure, this will still depend, be dependent upon the phase one and phase two investigations as well as the structural investigation that we'll do as well?
We do our own due diligence for anything that we would take, so. Yeah, there's specific deadlines where disclosures have to occur, where we have to have our reports done, and if, for some reason, that's something that can't be overcome between parties, if there is some type of issue, you know, there's options to terminate at that point. You have the risk involved of terminating with the escrow money being put forth, but like I said, those are fairly standard timeframes and items to have our inspections and, and surveys and studies. So once we get some of that information, council can decide how they want to move forward, but if the council approves this contract, those deadlines are, are things we'll have to abide by.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that for the viewing public, that we will go through and do the due diligence before we close on this property and finalize the agreement, so. All right, we have the motion, we have the second, we've had the discussion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay, we will continue to work towards a new public safety building. All right, next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items. Do we have any miscellaneous items to discuss? Anybody? Does somebody want to go on the radio with me tomorrow morning?
I'll go with you, though.
Okay. So we'll go on to the radio in the morning at seven. Next item, with no other miscellaneous items, we will move on. We do have an executive session, three executive sessions. One is for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving advice on specific legal questions under CRS 246402 subsection four subsection B regarding economic development negotiation strategies. We have one for negotiation strategies for the public safety building, and we have one for discussion of personnel matters under CRS 246402 subsection four subsection F. There will not be any decisions coming out of the executive session. So if we move into the executive session, we will immediately adjourn the meeting afterwards. Do we have a motion to go into the executive session?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to enter in the executive session. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay, we will be moving into that executive session, no decisions will be made. Our next city council meeting is on Monday, December ninth, 2024, at seven PM. That will be our last meeting of the year, and we hope to see you then, thank you.